Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, here.
Mr. Cossin?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Phipps?
Here.
Mayor Hall?
Here.
Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove any items? Hearing none. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 30, 2025, and the bills and payroll for the first half of June 2025. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and roll call.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Cossin?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitive comments. We would also ask that you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Okay, tonight, the order of the of the meeting, we're gonna, we've got a proclamation for Lakeland College. We're gonna do that right up front, and that'll give them a chance to get out of here. Not that they have to leave, but they're welcome to stay. But we're gonna do that right up front, then we're gonna take two quick pictures, and then we're gonna proceed with the rest of the items on the on the agenda. So I want to read this proclamation for Lakeland College. Proclamation, Lakeland College, 2025 baseball and softball season. Whereas Lakeland College Lakers baseball started in 1971 and has made two appearances in the World Series in 1988 and 2025 under the coaches, the coaching of Julio Godinez. Am I saying it right? You call you, it's it's coach, it's Coach Julio, right? That's right. With a record this year, by the way, of 45 and 21 in in 2025. Whereas the Laker baseball, the Lakers baseball made their first appearance in the NJCAA Division One series since 1988 and finished fourth in the tournament in 2025. Whereas the Lakers softball started in 1977 and has made the World Series in 2006, 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2022, 2024, and in 2025. And just one comment on that. The guys had better get it together. And we'll talk to the coach after that because you've got a lot of catching up to do. Again, but under the coaching of John Hendrix with an overall record of 45 and 20. And whereas the Lakers softball received recognition as all regional 20, 24 region and all Great Rivers Athletic Conference, the team awards go to Emma Thomas, Naomi Latandre, Caleb Brake, Paige Colley, Carrie Johnson, and Cara Moore. And whereas the city of Mattoon wishes to extend congratulations to both teams and their coaches for a remarkable season. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Rick Hall, Mayor of Mattoon, do hereby recognize June 17th as Lakeland Laker Day in the city of Mattoon, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. In recognition there of I, Mayor Rick Hall, have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Mattoon, Coast County, Illinois, to be affixed to this 17th day of June 2025. And I would like, I would like for the coach, we're gonna do baseball first, so coach, athletic director, and we don't have any of the, we don't, yeah, we have a couple of baseball players, yeah. So we want the baseball players to come up. Sam, get your camera out. We're gonna take a picture right up here, this, real quick. I'm gonna just stand just to you, for a bit of picture. You guys standing back here, like, know what you're doing. Your seal's back here. Sam, tell it to him where he wants to go. Don't mind his arm. Can't do these things. Hey, guys.
No, really happy to be here. This is a great group, and the sad part is I'm sad to see some of these guys go, but the cool thing about these guys are all local kids, and, you know, really, with what we did this year, it's in my, in my eyes, helping us get more of a local count at the state. It's been my biggest fight for probably about six years now is keeping a local count home. And now that they're seeing that we're having success, it's gonna be a little, a little easier for us. But the other piece is phenomenal group. If you all had a chance to watch them in the World Series, they played for each other. They play for an aimless chess, and it's something I will, as a coach, cherish forever because it's something I've decided to leave now. So hopefully we can continue to build on that and continue to have a successful softball now.
Okay, the girls couldn't make it, they're out practicing, so they can have another year. This year was full, build a full adversity. In early season, we had a coaching change, and we got new kids coming from different schools, and then, of course, everything happened, but one thing these kids learned this year, it's having children back, that first step, though, we have one team, everyone puts in the effort, and you get your reward, okay? So, thank you all, appreciate it. So, let's see. Next, next two items on the agenda are some retirements that we've got, and we're gonna let Dave and Jeff. Jeff, Jeff, so Jeff gonna say something?
Yep.
Okay, we do have people online, so we're gonna try to get, so you can hear the chief. Go ahead.
It's all yours, Jeff.
All right, can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
Perfect. I want to start out, is Stacy there, Melvin's wife?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I would like to start out by thanking her. Wives go unnoticed quite a bit with what we do with day to day. So Stacy, thank you for all the years of your sacrifices, all the missed birthdays, anniversaries, holidays, back when we had force backs all the time, and it seemed like Melvin was working 48 on, 24 off, instead of his normal 24, 48. Your sacrifices do not go unnoticed. So, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your support of Melvin to allow him to do his job. Melvin, Melvin came to us in June 16 of 1998, 27 years and one day of service. Melvin was promoted to engineer November 8 of 2006, and then to his current position, captain, back on July 4 of 2024. Melvin's been responsible for keeping our stockroom supplied, all our cleaning supplies, all our paper products, and, and until you sit down to go to the restroom and realize there's no toilet paper, you don't really realize how important Melvin's job was. And I'm thankful to say, I am unaware of that ever happening. That's how good of a job he did. So it was a tremendous help for me and the previous chiefs, I'm sure, not having to worry about the day to day stuff that he took care of. So Melvin, congratulations on your 27 years. Sorry I could not be there, but I, it's been a pleasure working with you. I worked several years on the same shift with Melvin, and it's been a pleasure working with you, Melvin. I wish you nothing but the best in your, in your well deserved retirement, and it's been an honor being your chief. So congratulations.
Thank you. Get your, you two guys up here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Captain Pierce, come forward, please.
Sorry, Dave, if I took all your thunder.
No? That was, word for word, I'm on, you did well. Flag for Captain Pierce, present to Melvin Pierce in appreciation of service to the city of Mattoon for the year of 1998 to 2025.
Well, I walked in here in 1998, not even knowing what job I wanted, I walked into that door, and first I met was Ken Donald, who I knew, so, and extended his hand and said, congratulations, dude's got the best job in the world. 27 years later, I can say he was right. I can say that to our young guys as well. Department's in good hands going forward, and they have the best job in the world. Thank you, it's been a privilege.
Okay, we've got one more retirement, and you're gonna do that one?
Shane. Yep.
You ready?
You're ready.
Shane?
Shane's been with us, Mattoon Police Department, since June of 1998. Before that, he was at KZ Illinois PD for about three years, so he's put in 30 years law enforcement experience, and would have kept going probably if he could have, but he's ready to move on to his next chapter with the school district, so he's right close to where he ended as an SRO. He's been at the middle school for the last eight years. Shane was also our range master for 10 years, for, for not quite the past 10 years, but almost the past 10 years. He'll be missed. I worked a lot on the street with Shane, my friend. We started out, he started a little bit before me, but we put plenty of miles in together, so sad to see him go, but I'm happy for him at the same time.
It's been a good run.
Sam, can we get a picture of you and Shane? Kyle, take the picture. You, you hand the flag to him. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, Shane.
Oh, I almost forgot, he is sadly leaving the best job in Colts.
Just slightly better than the last job he's ever featured. Okay.
Mayor, mayor, before you move on, can I, can I have a, for just a couple seconds? Okay, I know it's not, I know it's not on the agenda, but with Melvin's retirement, is Donald still, Cybert still in the room?
Yep, yes, he's there.
Okay. Donald is next to be promoted to captain, so there'll be the, I'll be filling out the paperwork and getting it to Kyle, the manager's decision request, for Donald to take over next shift. He's next on the promotional list for captain, and he'll be beginning his new position on next shift, June 20th, Friday. Donald's been working real hard at preparing himself for this position, taking his basic and advanced company officer. He's also got his hand in our radios, he gets them all programmed, our hydrants, as well as fixing hose. He's, he's a big, big part of our day to day operations. So I would like to congratulate Donald on his promotion that'll start on Friday, the 20th.
And you're good? Okay. Okay, now, what we're gonna do next is, the people that want to comment on the golf carts, we're gonna do that, that right before the motion. The other present, anybody else has any other comments? I know we have some people here that I think want to talk about chickens. Is that right? Okay, so we're gonna start with you guys. You'll have to come up front, say what your name is, you got three minutes, and say what you want to say about it.
Hello, my name is Ashley Herbert, and I live at 1101 Fowl, here in Mattoon, and I just wanted to say thank you again for allowing us as members of the community the opportunity to bring our ideas and proposals before you. Two years ago, we had a wonderful team approach the city council on the topic of a backyard chicken ordinance, in hopes that someday future citizens will be allowed the opportunity to keep a small regulated number of hens in their backyards for angling purposes. There is a growing population in Mattoon interested in this topic, whether it be for reasons of personal interest, self sustainability, or maybe family health and enrichment, and merely just wanting to know directly where your food comes from. So we are here to represent this group. Because I have been here addressing this topic a few different times now, and since I know that Bo Scott and Fit to Serve have done their due diligence in presenting a well laid out packet of information, citing both the copy of the ordinance from Mohammed, Illinois that we use as an example, and also the draft of an ordinance proposal that being far more diligently proposed initially, I'll try not to be redundant, but there is one thing that I have been thinking of lately that I thought perhaps I might share. Since we last spoke, I've had a countless number of people ask me where we landed on this topic back in 2023. Some of them have even been police officers, and this is particularly noteworthy considering that one of the main points of opposition last time centered around potential law enforcement concerns involving the law. And another big worry was in regard to property and potential HOAs. As we attempted to address previously, HOAs have their own set of rules and requirements, understandably, that property owners must adhere to, as also cited on page seven of your packets, when Fit to Serve contacted the mayor of Champaign to gather her experience with their ordinance. Quite frankly, the Mattoon citizens that we have encountered want the freedom to own this small scale livestock in their backyards, and this demographic is growing exponentially. Because we know that you probably still have questions, we've come prepared with information and experience to help address these concerns firsthand. And we have Bo Scott, the executive director from Fit to Serve, Carl Rave, with local FFA, Kyle Ballinger, who is a local chicken owner, and Sailor Morgan as well. Thank you so much.
Okay. Is anybody else gonna speak also? Go ahead.
Come on up, come on.
Ed, help her with the mic. There are, there are people, it's, there are people on line with us listening to the meeting, and that's why we need to have people speak into the mic so everybody can hear. Okay?
I'm Sailor Morgan, I live in Gates, Illinois, 1100 North Second Street. Raising chickens can be fun, educational, and rewarding. Taking care of chickens is a lot of responsibility, and it's taught me time management, too. I get up early every morning to make sure they have enough food, fresh water, and a clean coop. I do this before starting my schoolwork or other activities for the day. The best part is collecting eggs. I feel proud that I'm helping feed my family. Another thing I have learned is eggs are not free. You must buy or build a coop and purchase food and bedding for them, and that adds up quickly. Another benefit to having chickens is they eat bugs around your yard, and you can feed them food scraps from your kitchen, which reduces waste. And then their manure is used as fertilizer compost in our garden. It's a whole cycle. I one day hope I can have my own business selling my eggs locally. In conclusion, please consider letting my friends have chickens in your community so that they can enjoy all the benefits of raising their own chickens and enjoying fresh eggs right from their own backyard, just like me. Thank you for listening.
Good. Anybody else have comments? It's hard to compete with that, by the way. What are you gonna, what are you gonna say?
Thanks a lot. Sailor, don't want to follow that. My name is Bo Scott. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the executive director of Fit to Serve. And as Ashley mentioned, we tried to get a chicken ordinance passed a couple of years ago, and we understand that there are concerns. I'd love to hear, we don't want to add work to our people's, so if you guys have anything to comment, please share it over, because we don't want to put more on you than you guys, we appreciate you. So if you guys have any questions beyond those packets, you know, nothing's been decided tonight, so please feel free to reach out. We have plenty of people that we can rely on that own chickens, that can express the benefits of, and as the packet explained, we reached out to the mayor of Champaign to see what pros and cons she had. Those were the work we do. It wasn't, hey, let's get a cheerleading message. It was, what have you run into? She said zero complaints. Their only lament is that they have so much red tape to get chickens. So she would say simplify it as much as possible. So thank you guys for your time.
Good. Thank you. So, question, Kyle, next steps, what will we?
So we can review these and discuss with staff, and then start discussing with council as well, and get any input that you guys may have, any questions that you have, and we'll, we'll do some research.
Yeah, so we'll probably be back in touch with someone, it might be you, Bo, I don't know, to help in drafting, you know, an ordinance if we end up at that point.
Yeah.
So, so you'll be contacted for that, okay? Any other comments about chickens from anybody?
Yeah, just one question for Bo or Ashley. Two years ago, when you were here, you talked about the high school curriculum or FFA. Did that continue in '23 and '24 to kind of educate and make a part of?
I cannot answer that question, but we did bring Carl Ravey, who was still a boy with the Mattoon High School, so I'll let him answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Carl Ravey, yes, the chicken program at the high school has continued. I've been there now 10 years, so it's been there almost at a time or two that I've been there to get balls at, while, lock in a lot of other things, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments on chickens? All right, anybody have any other reasons to speak other than for golf carts, which we'll take up next? Yes, Ed, we've got a couple of people here. Let's go with Ed.
This looks different to me than this I had been sent. Yeah. My name's Neil, I live in Blackwater, Wyoming, here in Mattoon. And what I bring up is more a safety concern than anything else. Between Fifth Creek and Logan Avenue, Charleston Avenue, Lafayette Avenue. First of all, in the 200 block of Charleston, we have St. Donald Lutheran School. There's no school speed limit posted on Charleston Avenue. There's plenty of stoplights and stuff on Broadway, not that I drive. Second issue is, my main concern is, between Fifth and Logan, it's becoming a racetrack. They sit there at the red light, the minute that light turns green, it's like, how fast do we get to Logan Avenue, particularly motorcycles, cars, and fake trucks? And, why am I not said before now, I don't know, I've lived here for 40 years, but, but half a yard gone now, so I don't have to worry about. But, I'm concerned that, A, the safety of the students, although although they're not supposed to get out that side, but the traffic comes, that's in front of the school. And the second thing is, somebody's gonna get T-boned. What do those guys drive down that street? What people does? Somebody pulls out from that side street, and they're not paying attention, bam, they're already dead. So I think something needs to be addressed from the police department as far as the safety way to Anne Lafayette, according to one of my neighbors, is about the same issue we've got, if the nonstop from Fifth to Logan Avenue, Lafayette straight, and now they're gonna do an improvement of payment on route on Charleston Avenue. It's gonna be a real quick split, so I think it needs to be looked at, addressed, and I haven't got the solution for it, but I think it needs to be addressed.
Think, question, anybody has?
One thing we are looking at, that we've been actually discussing here recently, are speed signs, the, the type to flash at you and tell you to slow down.
That's what I thought, too.
And that, that area, yeah, that area right in there is actually on our radar for something.
Literally.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate it, I just think, I'm concerned about the schools' kids, I do remember a lot, but in the racetrack, if we, they ought to rename it, they mentioned Raceway. Thank you.
Those are Charleston Avenue, that's the state routes, I would, you'd have to get these school signs.
Well, we'll have to work with it. We'll let them, yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, you had, go ahead, come, come on up.
I was about to go.
Hey, this, pick you up.
All right. My name's Jacob Kimbry, I live in 778 Water, in Mattoon. I'm here to talk about the VGPS, or discuss at the May 20th meeting regarding the percentage of UOCAN being reviewed done by businesses with the extra $10,000 supplementary license that you guys are looking at passing. I'd like to start by saying, on the May 20th agenda, the area that's talking about the VGPS was not really mentioned in that, otherwise I would have been here to listen on May 20th. So I felt like it was kind of, it slid in during the proposal. I just wanted to say that, we talked to Kyle and Howard's. I just wanted to say that, in talking to Kyle and Howard's, my understanding of purpose of this is to try to deter future gaming, expansion of gaming, as we are at a potential saturation point with game in Mattoon. And I think, I don't disagree with that, that we are at a saturation point, but I think that the $10,000 supplementary license is unfair and also, I don't know what word I'm seeing, but a very large amount of money for us to have to pay. I think that we can find a different way of achieving the same goal of having, to create future gaming from the community, but I'd like to work with you guys and more than other departments, finding that other route.
Okay, any questions anybody has? Indeed, we did, of course, pass that ordinance. Of course, any ordinance can be modified. We will no doubt have more discussion on this subject to see what we might come up with, but you're exactly right. We did feel like that gaming was getting out of control in Mattoon, you know, having that on almost every block, it seems like, and that was the intent, but we may be able to make some adjustments later. But we'll be getting with you and whoever else you want to have.
We've had some other bar owners reach out to City Hall as well. No one's trying to make an appointment with the mayor. I've talked to them on different aspects of the ordinance. We've talked, and then Matt Hortonstein is a owner of some of the establishments as well. Couldn't be here tonight, but he wants to sit down and talk about it, and I've already had Dan looking into some of it, so we will sit down, talk with you guys.
And even the potential maybe for the existing locations to be grandfathered in if the $10,000 supplementary license is now to be legal through the state, since the existing ones of us that would qualify in that over 33% revenue part, one of the most, that everything, right, by the book, haven't been the ones that have tried to come in with a restaurant license or the P12 license and kind of pull the wool over your eyes, they get, they get, they get told, you know, in a car, shutouts.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other subjects want to be discussed?
Hello, everyone. My name's Jonathan Kay. I'm property manager down on 27th and Broadway. This is going to start with Six Gear to our very successful bird and butterfly garden that we have there. It's a couple acres. It's future residential development or commercial development, but it was safe. But in the meantime, we've made a head of it, and it's been working very well. I just wanted to see if we can continue with that another year, if that is acceptable or if we can promise.
Okay.
So you guys can give us some consideration. I'll touch base with the business.
I think that is on the mow list right now.
Yes.
Just FYI.
Yes, no, I understand that, and I was working there, I'd like to know that we've been doing this for a number of years, we've just no formal process for it other than this.
Yeah, well, I know we've been in this situation before with you, and we've mowed before.
Yep, not at all.
Then we did that last year, a couple years?
This came up last year, I don't remember if we ended up having to mow it, or if you mowed it, or what happened.
Actually, I can't get a meeting, it's just like I am now, and I asked for us to be able to continue this. The reason that it works well is because we're doing it similar to burning a prayer, a native prayer, a rock, and it's clean, doesn't have a lot of nuisance plants, it's 15, 25 native, other than more plants, and it's very good for our environment. If you look at the railroad property just across the road, you'll see that what it looks like when it's not being taken care of, when it's not being managed, so I don't want to think about just off now, that this project being managed this way doesn't provide value to the answer the neighbor, if there's a plan, anything that's necessary to encourage.
You do understand that you do have neighbors that have complained about that?
Well, actually, no, I didn't. I heard that they're working nice, but I didn't complain to the neighbors.
Yeah, the neighbors are all on the, the south side, have complained about this being high grass and animals in there, and they're concerned about it, they've called conservation officers, there's two sides to every story, and so, but we'll figure out what we can do.
This is the first time that that has gone off as an issue. If that is an issue, I have no problem with Logan. It's just been working, like I said, five years, it's been starting since the beginning.
Yeah.
I do believe that there are, what do they call those, the brown houses, they get in, they be people's homes there, and there's a problem in the neighborhood there.
Right.
And there's a big cat problem.
Right.
I agree those are problems. I believe we will have some problems regardless of whether that grass is mowed or not.
Okay.
I don't want to fight with you, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. We'll follow up.
Well, the only thing I would suggest, it's on the mow list, and what I don't want to see is them get to it, you said you'll mow it, I don't want to see them get to it before you, so if you're telling me you'll mow it, I can take them off of that mow list.
Yeah, absolutely, but my point is, is that I'd rather not mow it because of the value that it's.
Unless I am told by my bosses that you can have it there, then I'm not gonna change my opinion. It has to be by the facts.
Okay, all right.
Eric, so do you have work something else?
Well, yeah, we'll figure out whether we're gonna go forward with the mowing or not, but right now, like you say, it's on the list. There are people that, you know, you're, I don't know how many acres you own, and a lot of places that you can put up a lot, all the butterflies and bird, you know, you've got a lot of places you could do it rather than on Broadway Avenue, and that's where you're doing it. And that's a residential property, both sides of you, and in the back, next to your property, there's a lot of people that are upset with it. I don't know how upset the butterflies and bees might be if we mow that down, but I can tell you that other people are upset.
If it's a problem, I'll be glad to mow it.
Okay, so that makes it easy then. You mow it, and we'll figure out what other options you got.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other business?
Hello, my name's Dan Peacock. I live in 901 Fox Avenue in Yoga.
Okay.
I live in Mattoon. Just bringing a safety concern to the board, and I know you guys are the governing body of the lake. It seems in recent years, we've gotten a lot more wave boats, surf boats coming out to the lake, and when they're surfing and waiting for it, they're throwing anywhere from a two to three-foot highway. It's becoming a safety concern. We've got young kids that are either playing by beaches, we've got kids that are tubing, water steaming. When that wave comes by, you can barely see these kids, and other boats are coming around. We've had an instance, a Mattoon boat, where there was older people on it and younger children on it, that the wave actually hit the boat, turned it sideways almost, people fell, got hurt, and these boats are getting more and more prompt every year, you're seeing more and more of these out here. So we're definitely concerned and wondering if there's anything that we can do to either eliminate the problem, regulate the problem, but there is definitely a safety concern with the boats in channel.
Personally, this is the first time I've heard of it. I know there's a group called Friends of Lake Mattoon, we've got someone out there that works with them, have you heard about?
Yeah, it's been, John has brought that up as being a concern. It does do some erosion problems to the banks. I've actually just, in the last few days, looked at a couple things that even talks about turning over the bottom of the lake, that it's not good for water quality. So I think there is a trend out there that you'll see smaller lakes banning these.
Right.
So I think it is something that we ought to at least look at.
It sounds like they're definitely taking a look at it. Are you a member of that group?
I am not.
You're not?
No.
But you're aware of them, there's?
Yes, I've lived on the lake for 20 years.
All right, so.
Yeah, and we've seen the increase, and it's every year seemed like there's more and more coming.
Right.
And I would just see somebody get hurt out there.
All right.
My grandchildren, I sure don't want to see that get hurt out there.
No, and neither do we. Yeah, okay, so that's kind of on your ear ball? Yep. You know, take care of it.
If anybody's got any time over this, if you can, I would, you know, definitely invite you to come out and take a look for your health, and then see the activity, because I think it'd be very beneficial.
Okay, appreciate you coming, come here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Oakley, 255 Yoga, I also live on the lake.
Yes.
I've lived on the lake for about 15 years now, but I've seen an increase of the wave of boats.
Okay.
I've got, I've heard a wave, I've lived in, worked on, just about 10, 15.
Right.
When they go by, with less than 100 feet of my property, I'm losing my earth. As I lose my earth, even though I've got rip raps, it feeds on the lake, which is a way that they show. That's one concern. Another concern is a safety concern. This is a great Mattoon lake, but when those boats go by, they get the rock, and again, people fall.
Yes.
The gentleman's talking about some of his families have banned these boats. In Michigan, they've made it to where you have to be 500 feet away from the shore or docks, you have to have a 20-foot minimum depth in some of his pals. These lakes are 1,500 acres per corn. Lake Mattoon is about 1,000, which is, as far as areas where you can ski, it's about 750 acres, right? So you're really condensed with the amount of boats from one around, and seriously, stirring up soup. Besides the loss of earth, you're filling with lakes, you're also messing with fisheries, you're stirring the bottom as far as plant life and things like that.
Okay.
So it's this army that hits the environment of the lake. All this town also has some laws, where the stricts, wave boats, in less than 20-foot depth and 700 feet from the shore. Again, our lake is much smaller, so if you talk about those islands, the lakes, Michigan and Wisconsin, they kind of go.
Right.
Also, another issue with that is also sound pollution. With wave boats, you have to have a large structure above where you can talk about the boat, where the roll comes from, so you have to be at an angle to get about the plane.
Right.
With that, they install four, six, eight speakers, okay, where it's been at their house, once they drive by their house, they'll blow out and stir it up, right? Or imagine that, repeatedly blowing it up. It's not condensed, everybody is on water, and what happens when the sound goes across water? They can be halfway across the lake, and it's like a boombox sitting on my porch. So I love the lake, I love harmonizing with it, I love boating, I understand wanting to have tunes on the lake, you know, that's part of your boating, but I don't want to listen to some else's boats or three or four other boats slowing down, kind of, for hours.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council before we go on to our golf carts? Okay, so we do have a, how do you want to do this tonight? Do you want to make the motion, go with a second, go into discussion then? That, everybody, is everybody on the council okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead. At this point, Erica, you've got the first motion?
Yeah.
And we'll have the discussion after we get a second, and see what other comments we've got.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-5497, amending Title VII Traffic Code of the Municipal Code to Establish Chapter 76 Golf Carts Regulating the Operation of Golf Carts on Streets and Alley's Under the Jurisdiction of the City of Mattoon, Illinois, County of Falls.
Okay, can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, in force of discussion, we'll start some discussion among the council. Does people, does other people here like to address golf carts in the audience, offhand? Oh, you do? You want to make some initial comments?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you come up front, tell us who you are, and then we'll get into ours.
My name's Bob Lowry. I live at DeWitt Avenue. We all know that DeWitt is less than three. I bought my house in 2003, and I and my husband, we have worked hard to get this house. It's a mansion compared to what it was.
Right.
It looks good.
Now, what's your address at the time?
821.
821, okay.
We use our Flare Ranger for deading, scraping out mulch, whatever.
Okay.
We don't drive fast. It has a dump net on it, that's the whole purpose. A golf cart's gonna do us no good. We're the ones that came in here back a few months ago and brought this up, because we were pulled over by a police officer doing his job, I understand that. This thing is, the Art Ranger is as safe as anything else. It's got seat belts, it's got lights, it's got horn, it's got turn signals, it's got windshield, it's got everything. And this officer that pulled us over is the first one that's ever pulled over. We drive it up and down, back and forth to the yard, race, all the time. So we came up for tonight thinking that this was gonna be more than just golf carts, and it's not.
Yeah, no, it is not. You're exactly right. This is just golf carts.
So how can we draw up a petition? Because that's what we wanted to do to begin with, to get, we want to be able to use our Ranger, and I get it, I get it. People in this town, they drive way too fast, they drive like idiots. I live at DeWitt. That is the new Daytona 500. To you, get me a badge, and I can make you all kinds of money.
There you go.
It's pathetic. It is pathetic, but I want to know what I've got to do as almost a 60-year-old woman who works out in her yard, trying to keep your city beautiful.
Right.
Two yards, I've got, we've got the mother and all, and we've got ours. And you have to stay on top of that stuff.
Can I ask a question? What was it? What type of vehicle did you have again?
It's a Flare Ranger.
Flares? And then how fast did those go?
Roughly?
Forty.
Okay.
Does there's no sense in driving?
No, I just was curious, because I know that that is, that, you know, that's something that we would need to discuss, too, the speed that they can go.
They'd be on the Witt Avenue, Charleston Avenue.
They can't, they won't be, yeah, they don't be.
They shouldn't be, and there should be, there should be an age limit, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be cross to anyone, but if you can't drive a vehicle because you can't stay sober, then you have no business driving a lawnmower, a wheelchair, a bicycle, or anything else that has a motor on it, and I don't care if the motor's the size of a pea. If you can't drive something safely and stay sober, then you have no business driving anything.
Right.
So I don't, you know, if they pass this golf cart law, if you don't have a license, you're not driving it. If you're 16 years old, you're not driving it. I mean, I'm not the one that doesn't play the rules, but there has to be rules, and I'm sure you've seen things, you know, people are blowing up, there's gotta be rules.
The vehicle that you're talking about is not, you can't get license on the state, with State of Illinois.
It's a side-by-side.
A side-by-side.
Yeah.
Yeah, State of Illinois allows farmers to use the jack vehicles.
Right.
The city of Mattoon allows me to use them if you're going in a parade.
Right, in a parade, right?
So I can address some of your concerns about the licensing and things. So in the ordinance, it is that they have to be at least 18, they have to be a licensed driver, the golf cart has to be insured, it has to have headlights, taillights, turn signals, a placard with a permit, and there are designated crossings for certain streets like DeWitt, Charleston Avenue, like Land Boulevard, places like that, that have been, you know, we've worked very closely with the police department to ensure that they felt like they were the safest areas to cross. So just to address some of those things that you were asking about, those aren't in there for the golf cart.
And I want to get a petition for me to be able to use my Flare Ranger.
Yeah.
I have six in my yard all the time, I have, you know, just rubbish, I need to haul down to the city, and I can't do that, and it is a pain in the rum that I will get the job leader. And it is a pain in the rum that will get the job leader, the wagon on it, and the wagon doesn't dump. The dump, the bed on the back of our Ranger, you fill it full and you dump it, it's not several. I have to have something.
Yeah, well, I would, I would say that it's not that it wasn't brought up, that there was a lot of thought that goes into this. Uh, ATVs were brought up, side by sides were brought up, and I think generally speaking, um, start slow. You know, get this going, and this is good for you because now it's, it's going, it would be easy to, you know, ordinance can always be changed. Um, but I, there, it's not, there wasn't discussion on it.
Right.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that was some of the, what he brought up was, you know, start out with golf carts. We, we know that there will be several, but just kind of like the voting, you know. Side by sides have usually, a lot of times are rolled bar with the speakers in there and, and music. They, a lot of them that use it for off-roading have aftermarket mufflers that are loud. So, uh, again, those are some things that we would want to, uh, if we do allow side by sides, we would want to address and, and changes with the ordinance.
But I can see, I can see somebody grabbing a, a chair to top of it.
Good. Uh, alright, now back to us discussing this, we got a second, we, we want to have some discussion on this. Uh, I know we spent a, a lot of time developing an ordinance that we thought, uh, would meet most of everybody's concerns. Uh, the very subject of what's the next step, is there gonna be a next step? Came up certainly, uh, you get into a whole different ballgame if you're, it's more than just golf carts because golf course is a, a lot slower and, and, and they're very restricted as those streets they can be on and, and, uh, you start getting into other vehicles, it's, it's a whole different thing.
So we spent, uh, Sam, Ryan, Kyle and, and I and several others spent a lot of time discussing this. And, um, we spent a couple hours going through and picking out where we felt like the safest crossings were. Um, because they're not allowed on any state highways, um. We, DuWitt is only a state highway partway, but we felt like DuWitt was too fast for them all the way down. So, um, they have one crossing at a stop sign on, on DuWitt that allows people to get like through town. And so I think the goal was to put in as many safety factors as possible, to mitigate as many risks as possible. Obviously, we can't mitigate every risk, but to mitigate as many risks as possible, um, to get it a start. And then, you know, we can ease back if we need to, um, but that was kind of the goal in the beginning was, let's just get it going and then if we need to like loosen some of the reins, we can loosen some of the reins. But starting out tighter, we felt was better. Um, did you have anything you want to say about any of the safety things that we kind of talked about?
I don't, like you said, we spent multiple hours on multiple days.
Yeah.
Going over and over it, I, I don't think we can make it any safer. Right, there's nothing I could think of. The, the state, the state crossing routes are five of those, um, and we are working
With IDOT.
In conjunction with IDOT on those, um, but yeah, I, I think we pretty well covered everything.
Yeah, like we picked our one crossing on Charleston Avenue is at Fifteenth Street. That's where the police felt like that was the safest crossing, um, near the center of town. It was the crossing with the least amount of traffic at that stoplight. Ninth Street is not able to be traveled on, so there are a couple different crossings on Ninth Street. Where was another?
Uh, Rudy and Lakeland.
Rudy and Lakeland, Twenty Sixth and Marshall Avenue.
Right, there's no stop signs or anything there, but that is this kind of the school area and that's an area we're looking about the speed. Signs as well, so that would be good. Richmond and Nineteenth Street is where we would cross the North Nineteenth Street, so it's at a traffic light. So we tried to look at lights, we did talk with IDOT, IDOT knows which ones that we've chosen so far. Preliminary, they've approved them, you know, verbally, um, but they want to actually come and look at them. But they did like the ideas that we had at traffic signals that were maybe less busy traffic signals than others.
Did they give an idea on when they would come and look?
I think they'll be, I thought they were gonna try to come here this week, so.
So when we first, when this was all being discussed and even up until, until I read it in the paper this morning. It was always twenty one, page twenty one. Um, when I talked to Sam and Ryan and Erica, I mean, did you guys have any input on that being dropped to eighteen or?
Kyle had texted me last week and asked me, yeah. So at first I said, no, no way, and then I got to think if we have sixteen year olds driving cars around. How can I say no to operating a golf cart at eighteen if you can drive a car at sixteen? I changed my mind, I text Kyle back and he said, you don't want on, on second child by eighteen for that reason.
And, and most reason I even brought up the eighteen was most other cities have always were saying eighteen, so. Um, what, a couple of cities I talked to, the reason they said was, well, yeah, they can be in a car at sixteen, but this gives them a couple of years of experience driving before they drive a golf cart.
So will that prevent, I know one of the issues was having golf carts at the high school, is that gonna prevent that? Cause there's still, there will still be eighteen year olds in high school.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean that.
So is that, how is that issue gonna be addressed?
Unless the high school, unless the school district allows it, I don't think they will.
They can't have them on school property, like park them there?
I would, I would assume that they would not allow that, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's off the school, whether or not they want to allow that, kids to drive those to school.
They gotta take the long way there. You can only cross on Twenty Sixth Street.
Yeah, that, uh, I, I did hear the same, the argument that was made, uh, going from twenty five to eighteen was, at least the way I understood it was, hey, these guys are, they're, they're legally, they're adults at eighteen. And by the way, uh, which used to be a very popular topic, uh, they can be drafted and go in the military. And, uh, and some of us were. And so if you, if you can do that, uh, you ought to be able to drive those vehicles at the age of eighteen. So.
Originally, we had talked about twenty one because of the school and, you know, whenever Kyle would talk to me, my, my initial thought was, I'm gonna defer to Sam. That's his area of expertise, you know, and go with his recommendation just because I feel like that is not, I didn't feel like that was something that I could speak to. He deals with them at that age.
You know, we're gonna learn.
More than I do now.
We're gonna learn as we go through this process and, and we can tweak the ordinance once we get started. The other thing that came up more than once, you know, if we approve this tonight, are we gonna be able to do it tomorrow? Are we just gonna go and take it in fact, well, that, there are several things that need to be done. Uh, we may pick a date, uh, we, we may say, hey, we're not gonna actually implement this until next month, I don't know. But we're talking about, one thing that I think that good came out of this was the, uh, speed limit signs. Uh, Ed, of course, raised an issue, we've had other issues about DuWitt Avenue placing these speed limit signs that people, uh, at least from my discussion with our chief of police, uh, it does get their attention if you've got these signs. It's permanent speed limit sign that flash, you go to a certain, just like you do on the interstate, but not in a construction zone. You see how fast you're going, you do slow down. And hopefully we can get some of these things under control. The concern that, uh, you know, you made earlier about me, you, you do, and I'll tell you what, we really do appreciate homeowners that take care of their property. That's one of the biggest problems that we have and we appreciate, I, I stop at people's houses and thank them for cleaning up their houses. Just because it makes a big difference in where you live and the neighbors around you. They find out if you leave your property clean, then they start keeping their property clean. And, and I certainly appreciate that. The, the, the thing is, um, you know, to get, you know, you're, you're side by side and some of the vehicles, you need to go to the city dump and dump tree limbs or brush or grass or whatever it might be. You know, I borrow a pickup, I, I rent a pickup, I, you know, I don't have even the equipment, but I still do it. It doesn't stop me and I live on the west side, so I go all the way across town. Uh, so that really shouldn't prevent you from doing that.
Oh, no, it will never prevent.
You see, you seem, yeah, you seem to be pretty firm about that. So I, again, we do appreciate what you're trying to do. So, yeah, I, I, I think we're gonna learn some things as we go through this process. Uh, we still gotta figure out where the date, if, if we approve this tonight.
August first is what it says.
It is on there, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we wanted to give it a little, enough time for IDOT to come and examine, put up the crossing signs. So that people can start seeing them, so it's, it's given, you know, a month and a half, basically.
Well, you guys.
As of right now.
We've learned a lot already through the process. I was initially had reservations about the, um, about going forward with this. But then you start looking at some of the research and I, I give, um, Commissioner Butler credit. You, you've done a lot of research and you've, you've taken the ball and rammed with it. So, you know, kudos to you on a job well done with this. But, um, when you start looking at the research and you start talking with, uh, the police department. And one of the things I heard was we're too big of a community for, uh, for golf carts. And then when you start looking, doing your research, you see there's Effingham, Centralia, Bloomington, uh, there's some communities in the St. Louis area that, uh, that allow golf carts. And so you, it starts to take on a little different meaning. And I, I do think it's gonna add to a sense of community for our residents and people that want to partake in, in that. Any chance we had to get people out, um, active, moving around in the, and being in the community, I think that's a positive. So, um, and like you said, we can always amend things as, as needed, but, uh, I think it's a positive step forward.
Dave, you, uh, it, it all revolves around what some of the comments have been made. I mean, when I first heard about it, my initial concern, and it still is, is we gotta slow the traffic down now before these are rolled out. And it, and it involves these signs. And I want to make sure, I know the ordinance says it's August first is when this is implemented. Have we ordered the signs, will they be, will it be installed a couple of weeks ahead of time? So we do get the people slowed down before these are ever hit.
We've, we've got a quote for signs, we haven't decided how many we're gonna purchase yet, but, uh, we'll get some ordered. Again, depending on how long it takes to get them.
And we mapped it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if they're not, and.
It's even going where the golf carts are going.
So some signs will go near crossings, some will probably just go in other areas that we feel need to slow down.
Lafayette Avenue East is a perfect example.
Right.
Yes.
And Sixth Street.
Sixth Street, Thirty Third, south and north, we're coming into town, all good spots for those speed signs.
So, so Sixth Street, for example, is green on the map. And if we don't have those signs in place before August first, that's an issue to me. Um, so I want to make sure, again, we slow people down, we, we need to slow them down anyway on Sixth Street regardless of a golf cart.
Yeah.
So, so I just want to make sure that we're gonna do that and if, if they're not in place, are we gonna delay that August first date until we do?
I think it's also important to remember that whenever you go to Arthur, you slow down whenever you see a slow moving vehicle emblem in front of you. If somebody is driving in front of you now that's on a tractor or a mower with a slow moving vehicle emblem, you slow down and go around them. Like we don't just mow the mower, we don't mow our bicycles, we don't, you know, we don't do those things currently. I don't know that, if we don't have signs up by August first, I don't know that it's going to be fifty five people in golf carts on August sixth driving them.
Sure. Yeah, right. They're also used to it in the north or, or in the smaller town.
No, but I mean, when we go there.
Yeah, you, you're not used to it on Sixth Street. So if you have some people that are used to flying down Sixth Street and all of a sudden, there's a, you know, a slow, slow, what do they call it? SLB, right, with a little bit of sign on it, you're gonna.
I drive a tractor staying there every day on Western. Triangle on there in the morning.
Well, if, if we need to, we can put a qualification on the ordinance tonight, we can make an amendment to the ordinance that says we will not implement it until at least the signs are in place. We've got a target date of August first, but I don't really know if we can meet that.
I, I, yeah, we don't know about how fast we'll get the speed radar signs, but the other signs will be no issues. The crossing signs will be no issues, the speed radar.
One question I have not asked them is where are your shipping times, I can find out tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll find out and then again, it's how many do we put up, you know?
I, I received a call today or this evening actually, uh, from someone that lived, and I did not know the answer to this, that lived out at the country club, but lives in the city limits. And they, and they're commenting that, hey, we own golf carts, are you saying that we cannot drive on city streets? They're not marked, are they?
If that's not a, to get from the country club, you have to, you would have to travel on a county road and we can't.
We have no.
We don't have, we don't have any say in that county.
To get to the country club.
Right.
Get from the coun, country club.
Country Club Road is a county road.
Right, okay.
So we don't have any jurisdiction on saying we can or can't allow people.
And they've always been on it, they've been doing it forever. So this, so they should not have an issue unless the county raises that issue.
Now, like Hallmark Drive, Country Club Estates and their subdivisions, those are green city streets that they can, they can drive on.
Okay, alright, that's fine. So that, that was one of the questions that he had. Uh, yes.
Something, um, that you guys also made, um, so regarding the, the signs, so there are only signs that say this is a crossing for the.
Yes.
About the ones that, uh, how are the people, when they get their license, are they gonna get a map that says this is the only thing you can use? And make sure you follow this? The other thing is, what about the roads that you ran it out? They're gonna know, how are you guys gonna identify those roads that are still thirty miles an hour that are, that you run out as you can?
So they'll get a copy of the map and the ordinance when they get their license.
There's also a, uh, exhibit you sent us this weekend that they have to sign.
Yeah.
They're, to receive their permit that they understand, yeah, that they understand that this is, they have, they have to carry insurance. You have, you are making this choice as a responsible adult to drive this vehicle. Um, and that these are the roads you may not drive on, these are the roads that you may cross.
And then there was a map that was included in the packet, but there's a different map that has all the, the mid understanding correct? All in the leaders, off limits.
Yes.
Yes, all of it.
So that one will be the official map.
Correct.
Other than what's in the pack.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, I have a couple of questions from here. Um, do we, I know Effingham, I think fifty three golf carts, not sure about, Dave mentioned. Bloomington, Jacksonville, I know Arthur, of course, smaller communities, Arthur has two hundred. Do you have any idea how many potential, you know, what, what's the market gonna be for this versus?
Effingham started out with a hundred and twenty their first year. And they're down below a hundred is what he told me, I don't know what number they're.
It's what they, it's what the chief told me.
It's dropping, their, their administrator said a hundred and twenty the first year and it continues to drop.
And then most people, I mean, what, is it just jump on the golf cart and go downtown or? I, I'm trying to get my, my hands around what, I mean, are we gonna joyride on Western Avenue or are we gonna go to Bagel Bites?
We're gonna do both. I'm gonna come pick you up and you're gonna.
No, uh, most, you know, talking to Effingham's administrator, he, he did say that, you know, it stays more neighborhood areas. But he says, you know, he doesn't see them driving to the bars, he doesn't see them driving downtown.
If you guys are okay with that, right, then drive the car. Speaking of parking, by the way, where are they gonna park?
Speaking of parking, they're gonna take up a car spot.
That's what it is, that, that's restricted, they can't do it on sidewalks.
They cannot be on sidewalks or private property. Bike paths, yeah.
Could there be bicycle car parking on, on the western side, so this caller is taking a look at this?
I don't know where we put them.
Just like motorcycles though.
Yeah.
But they don't have special lanes.
Those are all things that, you know, as we find out how many people utilize it, you know, there's always the thing is make it a community thing. T-Town, uh, has a movie drive up golf cart movie night. So, I mean, there is other tourism type events that can happen along with it. Um, so, yeah, as, as it evolves and we see how many people are really in cards, those are some things that we can look at.
Yeah, that's a question.
And again, we kind of already allow this because, you know, we do allow the DUI bikes to drive around town and.
Yes, questions?
I didn't actually come meeting to discuss golf. So is it possible to get from any place in Mattoon to the downtown area or, I mean, up at the ninth street? How, I mean, is there a way to get from my house to that place?
To Broadway, let's say.
Yes, I guess. So from any location. Yes, I guess, so from any location in Mattoon, you can get to Broadway.
There, there is a couple areas, subdivisions that, that can't get to.
If you are, what is it, Northwest DeWitt, Northwest DeWitt, those little, those little subdivisions in there, they're kind of landlocked. Just insurance, simply because it would have to be a crossing at each single one and it kind of seemed excessive for.
Well, that's what.
Maybe two cars.
We wouldn't be able to have a crossing in every one of those subdivisions.
And, and I dot won't let us have that many either.
Just there, just, that's the only place really.
It's like a six block area, yeah.
For the neighbors.
But when they get the map, they're going to see what, what they got to deal with. And they'll either figure out they can't, they, they're not going to be able to take a golf cart or they're going to have to do something else.
You can get to basically every single restaurant that is, you can get from the mall west.
So you won't be able to get in the Walmart area, anything like that. But you would be able to get to the mall by using Richmond, but not Broadway. Anything east of Logan on Broadway would be prohibited, there's just too much traffic out there.
Then you get into the speed on the, in the county roads.
So I would think that people are, those people that work at the mall.
Yeah, you know, again, you know, we're going to get these questions come up and if we have to modify what we've got, we're going to have to do that. We could discuss this, and I'm not, I'm not trying to cut it by all, but, but we can discuss this in an hour or two. And we, we need to log what concerns come up in the next several months and figure out what we want to change, anything. So, I don't know, anybody have anything critical?
I just have one final question for Sam, do you have any, this is going to increase some of the enforcement by your department? Are you, your department good with that? Making stops and, because eventually they're going to get, we're going to get more calls out to Emerald. And it's, it's another thing for your, your guys to.
I don't see any problem, I'll be the first to let you know if and when it hits.
Yeah. You know, I, I would assume on that issue, initially you're going to do a lot of warnings. You're not the first person you stop that's violating a rule, unless they're really screwing it up. You're going to give them warnings just so they know, but.
I think people who buy the type of golf cart that's required and pay the yearly fee that's required and the insurance that's required, they're going to act right on the golf carts and we won't have a whole lot to.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Yes, just one final comment, I want to reiterate, reiterate what Commissioner Cox. Very well researched, great work on, on the whole group that did this and a lot of thought went into it. I think it'd be interesting to see to your, now how big of a, we're going to do that.
All right. Any other comments? Okay.
You're speaking of Sixth Street, that's nothing to do with golf carts. Sixth Street and DeWitt. That intersection right there, they run that stop sign constantly, they need to have, like, lights around those stop signs, because people don't know it's there. But I mean sixty mile an hour, too. My mother always drives here on the corner, we need a stop sign.
Yeah, I know which one you mean, yeah. Might be a good place for some kind of something.
We might want to test a roundabout, but I don't want that intersection.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any other thing? Okay, so we had our discussion, if there's no other discussion, we've had a second. We're going to call a, a real call for this item.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Okay, next item.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five thirty three zero eight, appropriating five hundred and fifty thousand in motor fuel tax funds for the twenty twenty four street maintenance uses and authorizing the city clerk to sign the document twenty four dash zero 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 dash zero zero, T M B L R one four two two zero.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, and any comments on this one real quick?
I'll just say, since we had an initial publication of notice for this began here, brings it up to cover any expenses that we had. And this year was actually longer than normal because we extended it to the end of April matchup with the city's physical year.
Okay. Any other comments? Real call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve council decision request twenty twenty five dash twenty six oh five, approving the plans and specifications to perform concrete paving and patching on Remington Road and Swords Drive, two five dash zero 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 dash zero four dash G M.
Have a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and, any comments on this one?
I'll just say, if you drive out there and you see that intersection, Swords, you're going to make that a lot of that, the panels are cracking and stuff like that, we're going to get that fixed. Plus, Remington hooking up with the new Remington out there because that's just continued to deteriorate too. I'm going to get that all paved, hopefully then before they will get all those seals and stuff out there.
Good deal, all right. Any other questions? Real call.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request twenty twenty five twenty six oh six, approving the engineering proposal in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from the Upchurch Group to complete phase two engineering, refinal plans and specifications for the right in, right out on Illinois Route sixteen west of Walmart to connect to the Woodell Way extension at Detrow Drive and authorizing the mayor to sign the proposal.
And a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments?
I begin here, this kind of gets us in preparation to apply for more grants. We're planning for grants and having plans in place, specifications in place, right away in place, all those kinds of things. Gives us a much better chance to get the grant money.
Good, okay. Uh, real call.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash three three zero nine, approving, approving the payment, payment design cost for completing final plan specifications and bid documents for construction of a right in, right out entrance on Illinois Route sixteen west of Walmart and connecting it to the extension of Woodell Way on the west side of Detrow Drive for the lump sum amount of seventy thousand using rebuild Illinois funds and authorizing the city clerk to sign the resolution. One three dash zero zero two five nine dash zero zero dash P V.
Any second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and comments?
I'll just say, we have rebuild Illinois funds that have to be obligated by the end of June
and this particular project will put towards that. And then actually the next two motions that will come up, we'll take care of all remaining funds that we have in books.
Okay, very good. All right, real call.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash thirty three ten, approving the payment of the city of Mattoon's portion of construction costs for the extension of Woodell Way west of Detrow Drive in the amount of one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars using rebuild Illinois funds, parentheses, R B I, and authorizing the city clerk to sign the resolution twenty three dash zero zero three fifty three dash zero zero dash P V.
And a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Butler, and any, you write comments on the same thing?
They're all the same thing.
Okay, real call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash thirty three eleven, approving the payment of the city of Mattoon's portion of engineering cost to complete the phase one study of the intersection at Swords Drive and Illinois Route sixteen in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars using rebuild Illinois funds and authorizing the city clerk to sign the resolution, two five dash zero zero three seven four dash zero zero dash T S.
And a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and you covered it, same thing?
Yeah, we're going to, just comment note to the full cost of this, it's being shared fifty fifty of I dot. So they're sharing another hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to complete the settlement.
Okay. And a real call.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to adopt special ordinance number twenty twenty five nineteen sixty five, approving the interest rate and terms for a forty five thousand dollar loan from the revolving loan fund to Melissa M. Walker dash Harden of Studio Twenty One to finance the R L F loan at the Studio Twenty One facility located at fourteen oh eight Broadway Avenue, Mattoon, Illinois.
Any second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Butler, and,
uh, this is kind of similar to what we've done in, in the past. Harold's Cleaners, it was more of an emergency, but they bought equipment on a boiler to, to help get his, keep his business going. This is just, you know, a new business downtown, it is buying equipment. It is also not just her business, but she's got three beauty salon chairs that she could rent out as well. So that some of that equipment is in there as well.
Okay. Any questions? Real call.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision twenty twenty five dash two six zero seven, authorizing the purchase of a new T V four five zero V case track loader skid steer in the amount of sixty five thousand seven hundred with trade-in attachments from Berkey's Construction Equipment for use in Public Works Department and authorizing the city manager to sign the invoice.
Okay, a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and so this is trading in a holder skid steer that we have. The Sourcewell is a nationally recognized bidding process that the state allows. We actually went ahead and got proposals that were cheaper than the Sourcewell bid. The Sourcewell bid was they give you eighteen percent off of the retail price. We got three other quotes from Bobcat Case and John Deere. Case was the lowest, which is fortunate because it's right across the street from the Public Works Department as well. So it's, it's the easiest for maintaining as well. So, yeah, we're just trying to replace some, some equipment that hasn't been replaced for years. Any other questions? Erica, this particular one wouldn't be registered under the, uh, golf cart, uh, to be authorized on the streets, would it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the.
You made the road.
Construction equipment, it's like a tractor.
Quite a bit bigger.
Okay, I'm just giving you a hard time, let you know. Okay, real call.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Uh, comments by council? Let's just start right over here, Commissioner Phipps, anything?
Um, no, I just really appreciate all the people that spoke tonight. Thanks for coming. Of course, a lot of people left already, but always good to get citizens' feedback.
You're right. Commissioner Cox, anything?
Yeah, great conversation, discussion tonight, appreciate everybody's input and that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone, and I'd like, especially like to thank Sam, Ryan, and Kyle for their assistance in all of this and, you know, letting me bug them all the time.
Last but not least?
Thank you, Mayor. Lot of, just following up on everybody saying about dialogue and I think that's how councils function. I did have concerns, but hopefully everything plays out and I think there's enough checks and balances in place. Again, I want to thank everybody, know that you've been aggressive with this and your thoughts. So, that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, the only comment I'm going to make, we've been spending a lot of time, I know working on some of the subjects we talked about tonight, but the bond, the bond sales for the sports complex in phase two has come along on schedule. That'll occur at the end of the month. And we will officially be moving ahead, we really are moving ahead already to some extent on phase two. We'll, we'll be done with that, scheduled construction in the next twelve months because we already have baseball games scheduled for June of twenty six. So we hope to have all that done, all that's moving along, the stores, new hotels, everything. I feel, I feel very comfortable, I know Kyle spent a lot of time and, and a lot of the other people that we've been working with, so appreciate that. Any other comments you might want to make up here? Could anybody make a motion?
I'd make motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Okay, and can we get a second? Anybody willing to second that?
Second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and real call.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. All right, okay. Being adjourned, thank you for coming.
You're going to get pictures, aren't you?